Okay, Leanne, we're about ready to start.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call this meeting to order and we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, good morning. We have a sparse crowd here, but we'd have an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed, and I don't see anybody present for that. Item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments on the agenda? Any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those nay, motion carries. I'll have to slow down for that on-the-phone response here. I go too fast. Item five is the consent agenda items. We have approval of the minutes, approval of the travel requests, approval of the personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorization, and approvals of the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Any comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Porzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight is routine business and department head reports, so let's do the claims first here. Is there a motion to approve for the claims?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments or questions on the claims? Any questions on the claims or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Porzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B is department head reports. Be it noted, we have had the sheriff's report delivered to us. He had other commitments, is not here to present it. We have the written report, and we'll move on to Brian, your update from the highway department.
Yesterday afternoon, I went and spoke with Pram Construction in regards to those bridges south on 77, and they poured the north approach slab on 427, and they did the (inaudible) break on that, and that came back satisfactory to open that portion up. And then 428, they poured the south approach slab, and the seven-day concrete break will be done this afternoon or this morning sometime, and then we should be able to open that stretch up. And one of the things I'm going to do, since they had quite a bit of material down there, is we're going to take our broom down there and make sure that there's no debris on the road that people would run over to damage their tires, and they're going to move the traffic control devices, the barricades, and we're going to open that stretch back up here hopefully today or tomorrow. That's my report.
Any questions for Brian? Hearing none, we'll move on to Vicki, your report please.
For my report, just going to let you know, we collected 20,552,000 in taxes, so we are right with what we were last year. So our income with that, so we're staying busy. And also to give you an idea, we did, which April is not a motor vehicle month, so all of the titles we do, we've been doing through the Dropbox and through the mail. And so it's like a three-part process where they drop off the payment in the Dropbox along with the paperwork. We get it together, and then they either send us a check or they do it with a credit card online, so it's about a three-step process. So in April, we had, or excuse me, March, we had 591 titles in a regular motor vehicle month, and in April we had 497. So the staff has just been running crazy to try to get all those titles done, plus doing the 20 million in taxes. So we've been busy, and then on top of that, when we get the mail, we've been getting boxes of mail for absentee requests. We've had 1,691 requests for absentees. We've received 300 and some back. So it's been a lot of work, but we're doing good, and I have to just commend the staff for keeping up with everything. So that's been going good. Wind tower money, we did receive that, and the total check was 900,624.32, so it was down about $600 from what it was last year. The county portion was 315,218, and it was just down a few hundred dollars for the county portion. So we're still right on target for what we had for revenue. We're still good that way. And just to kind of give you an update too, the townships get 15% of that money. The county gets 35, and the schools get 50%. So that will all be distributed with the monies for this month. So they will have that by the 19th of May. And that is everything that I have to report from our office unless you have any questions.
There any questions for Vicki? Again, thank you to your staff and you. I know it's a little extra hard work with this current situation, but we appreciate it, and I think the public does too.
Yeah, I think everybody's been great to work with, and you know, we don't have anybody really that calls in with any mad, being mad about it. They're just happy that we can do it, and we are too, because if we wouldn't be open to try to get caught up with that, it would really be quite a job. So we appreciate that. So, thank you.
I could probably see you smiling over the phone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for your report. Mr. Hill, Bob, your planning zoning and emergency management report.
Yes, sir. Back in April, we got the project notification of the 20th Street Overpass, what it's known as. They are currently doing a study such as before they select which avenue they want to move on. We got notified as I'm the floodplain administrator, and then we also got a postcard in the mail saying that instead of having a public information meeting, they've got a website set up for a public information website release. You can go to the website and put any comments that you may have. The website will be up until yesterday, so apparently that's old news. On last Friday, last Wednesday through Friday, me and my staff, we actually attended the American Planning Association National Conference digital version. The original conference was scheduled for Houston, Texas, so they sent out this thing where you can get a greatly reduced price. So Richard had never been to a national conference, so I figured we would take a chance, and I got a travel request, late one in for that one. And the first meeting that me and Richard had looked at was on how to conduct the zoning meeting in the digital world and things like that. We do have a zoning meeting tonight, and we've got information from the First Planning District on how we should conduct that meeting, and then, of course, the training we got from this online session helped us quite a bit, so that all worked out good. We do have a zoning meeting tonight. We look for this one to last probably until about midnight. It's got some controversial topics included. May 13th, we got a county safety meeting scheduled. May 14th, we got a PPCC, that's a pandemic planning coordinating committee meeting. I haven't heard yet if that's going to be on Zoom or not, but as soon as I know, I'll be more than happy to let you know. And then I've got a local emergency planning committee meeting scheduled for May 21st, and we are waiting to hold off on what happens later in today's meeting on what the counties, how we're moving forward on to determine if that's an in-house meeting or if that's going to try to be on a web-based type thing. That's my report.
Thank you. We're going to have a new report from Dustin Huber, our new director who's a BCOA.
A question for Mr. Hill.
All right, go ahead, state your question.
Bob, can you tell us if there's what you know about what's happening with the census?
Well, right now, I want to say we're about 66% in the county, a little higher than the city is, and the census, everything's being pushed back. As the communities open up, then the census is going to open up, and the people still want to get out. Anyone sitting back thinking that they're not going to be contacted by a census person in person is sadly mistaken. The census is going to count you one way or the other. Obviously, we would love for our citizens to go out and do it online or over the telephone, but if you still don't want to, the federal census will come out and get you sooner or later. The census has pushed everything back by months, so I wouldn't anticipate for the census to actually be done until 2021 probably now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are we posting anything on our website about people needing to do that?
Just what we've had census stuff on the website that's continuous, and we update the Facebook page off and on when new stuff comes out.
And I think the important thing now, people that haven't already done it have lost those cards, and getting the information out on how you proceed if you've lost your card that tells you what to do. That would be maybe a helpful thing for us to put on our social media.
Okay, I'll look into it, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions for Bob? Hearing none. Dustin, you have the floor.
Good morning, everybody. Like Commissioner Bartley said, my name is Dustin Huber, the new director. I wanted to introduce myself. For those of you who don't know me, I graduated from Brookings High School, later went to SSU for industrial management. During that time, I worked part-time at the Swift Health Center. When I graduated, they found me a job in Las Vegas, Nevada, at the South Point Hotel and Casino. I was the arena coordinator there for two years and then decided to move back home, and they offered me a full-time job back at the Swift Health Center as operations supervisor, later moved up to operations manager. When I saw the job out at the OAC, I just wanted to grow my career path, decided to apply. You guys are nice enough to give it to me, and I just want to continue that excellent service and help it grow. I want to let more people know that it's out there and what we have to offer. The last couple of weeks, we've been cleaning the place, organizing, getting some of those spots that you normally don't get to, but since it's closed, it's a great opportunity to get that done. The part-time staff and I are working on some standard operating procedures on just when people come through the door, how we approach that, how they sign the waivers, how we're putting that into the computer, just so everybody's on the same page. And yeah, we're just continuously cleaning. They're teaching me all the new computer software. They've been great. Bob Hill and I met last week on this generator you guys have been working on. I think we need to revisit that, just so we're apples-to-apples on what we're telling these vendors that are coming in. We can talk about that, and I don't know if Bob wants to mention anything on that. I'm trying to get in touch with all the service providers, such as Trane, just introduce myself, and what kind of contracts we have set in place with them. The part-time staff and I have also, we're trying to come up if we, when we can reopen on our procedures for that, making signs, displaying them all around the building, how many we can hold in archery range, 50% or 10 people, gun range, and then also the classroom for when that comes. Last thing, I would like to thank that part-time staff out there. They've been doing an incredible job through all this. They've been really patient with me, and I'd like to just thank them. And that's all I have. If you guys have any questions for me at all.
Any questions for Dustin? Really easy, no questions.
There we go, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. Bev, could we have a register of deeds report, and I see you're also, under item B, you have a report for us.
Yes, I have the annual report for 2019. We can get to that right away, and you can follow along on the screen. It's got the spreadsheet. Our office generated 410,065.25 in 2019. With the first line is transfer fees, which is based on a dollar per thousand of the purchase price of real estate, so it's on every, on the deeds, and that was 205,484.50. Second line is the general fees, which consists of the filing fee for documents, UCC financing statements, and location notices, 151,181.75. Third line is the marriage licenses. We issued 211,000, 211,000, no, 211 marriage licenses for a total of 8,680. Certified copies of birth, death, and marriage certificates. The fee is $15 each, and we issued 2,717 for a total of 40,755. And then the final line is copies and discs. The copies are what we sell to the abstract companies, and in 2019, they also received a disc from us, Dakota Abstract did. Now Dakota Abstract has changed that, and we email the documents every day and charge them daily on the charge slip, but they are paid monthly on it. But we try, they email and get the documents every day instead of this disc. It's 3,964 was the total in 2019. And then the next sections are all breakdowns of those totals. The second section is of the general fees, and then the next section, the third section is the breakdown for the tech fee, which is that $3 from each document goes to the state and $2 stays in the county to be used only for our tech in the office. And then once a year in August, the tech fee is split between all the counties that we've sent, the money that we've sent to the state, and this year we received 4,303.70, which every county received that. And that's what I used for that new filing system, the new that we just recently purchased. Certified copies are broken down in the fourth section, and I show what stayed in our county, which was 17,485, and then the state received 23,270. The next is the marriage license revenue. Our local domestic abuse shelter received 6,510, and then 2,170 stayed within the county to reach that total of 8,680. The last section shows the actual revenue that stayed in the county, 370,743.25. That total does not reflect the 4,303 that the state sent back to us. For the 2019 budget, my projected revenue was 313 and 700. The actual state in the county was 370,743. So I projected a little low. It might be for 2020 that I probably projected a little high due to this unforeseen time that we are going through. There's other spreadsheets there. I do a comparison between 2019 and 2018 with a plus or minus. We had more transfer fees and basically stayed the same on marriage license and certified copies and copies and discs from 2018, but we were lower on the number of documents, which makes the general fees lower by 8,460.25. Otherwise, everything stayed pretty much the same. And then on the next spreadsheet, we've got the comparison of number of documents, and it also shows every month what the county tech fee was and the state tech fee to make the total. So, any questions?
Any questions for Bev?
I don't really have a question, but I just want to say, I work with a lot of register of deeds offices, and you are just to be congratulated on the quality of the service provided to the citizens in Brookings County and the work that your office does. And thank you for all of that.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I have a very good staff. They are behind me all the way and keep me focused on, if there is a mistake, they tell me about it, which I really appreciate because, like, the documents are there forever, and if there's a mistake, it's there for everybody to see forever. So, and I really appreciate them, and I appreciate you saying that. I was going to tell you that the shelving unit is in and functional and working great, and Terry got the carpet, there were some carpet pieces that had to be torn out, and they were carpet squares, so that was easy for the installers to do that. But Terry found some leftovers from when we built, and he replaced all that. He did a little painting on the wooden structure that had to be put down before the unit could be placed, and he's got it looking just great, and it's really nice to have the office back to being functional that way. For our closing, being closed during this period, we have continued to, title company come in. They come in separately. The Brookings County title comes in usually about 8:30, and Dakota Abstract about 11:00. Vicki has graciously been bringing documents from First Bank and Trust when she goes to make deposits, so that courier does not have to come over. We have been helping the funeral homes with getting death certificates. They call with what they need. We prepare them, and then our offices next to the parking lot, they call when they come, and we go out and bring them the death certificates they need. So we've been functioning that way, and it's been working. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bev. Misty, do you have a report?
Good morning. I'll make mine short and sweet. Just kind of wanted to update you. We started April, we had some pretty good weather these last couple of weeks. We were expecting to spray. I've got my chemical in, and now we get blessed with this wonderful rainy cold weather. I have the guys going around marking spurge spots down, and also going to try and do something with the cattails along county roads. We've got some chemicals we can use that are aquatic, and as long as they're only in our right of ways that we're taking care of these cattails, we're able to spray them. So as soon as it hits 70 degrees, though, that's when you can spray cattails. So just an FYI, if you see us driving along spraying into the cattails, that's what we're doing. I don't foresee us being able to do that until end of June, beginning of July, when it's a lot warmer. But otherwise, I think all of our equipment is working well so far. I'm hoping for a good summer.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
No questions, thank you, Misty. We'll move on to, well, we're a little early for that nine o'clock one, so let's go right down to regular business. See what we can achieve there. Item A is an action to approve resolution number 20-19, a resolution closing the vote center site in Arlington, South Dakota for the June 2nd, 2020 primary election. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sorry, second. Motion been made in second. Any comments?
I unfortunately was unable to find enough workers for this location, so this resolution would close this vote center just for the primary, just for the June one, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Now, call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Porzma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is an action to approve a resolution number 20-20, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2021 Mack truck based upon the price established through the Spink County South Dakota bid process. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments? Any comments? Brian?
I know I brought this up at the last meeting and speaking with our sales representative. The plant is still currently shut down, but trucks that are on order, specifically like counties and stuff, if we get our names in the hat, we're more likely to receive that truck by the end of the year. Tentatively, right now, we'd be looking at, the earliest we'd receive the truck would be November. That's if they open back up as scheduled. They're going to be looking at opening up late May to get crews in there, but they're going to be kind of phasing it in, so they'll only be working at, you know, 25 to 30% of their workforce. So they don't know the exact date that we'll receive the truck yet, but if we have our name in the hat, we're more apt to get it. And Spink County's bid was
Question, Larry?
Brian, is this just the chassis, or is this the box and everything?
This is just the chassis. I'm specking it out separately as far as the equipment to outfit this truck, but one of the things there too is, and I'll be bringing that up at the next meeting, we may receive the truck, but we might not get any of the components to outfit it. So they're working on trying to get a little closer on the build date so we can, when we do receive these items, that we can get them put together. So it's just been kind of a mess as trying to far, as far as coordinating to make sure we get our components, to make sure we can use what we're buying.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Now, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Porzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to approve agreement number 20-18, an agreement to provide for the striping and continuing maintenance of county roads within Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments on this one, Brian?
This is the 80/20 split that we've been doing for quite a while, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Porzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to approve agreement number 20-190, State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for Weed Spraying Services by the Counties. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments, Misty?
This is just, we typically spray the DOT, and the state of South Dakota usually just gives us, we apply, and we tell them how much we're going to charge them to spray DOT roads. We went over last year, so they are forced to put it out for bids. We got the lowest bid. Now they, their joint powers just need to go over it. You guys need to sign it, and then we can start spraying on DOT.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Now we'll call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F is an action to approve agreement number twenty dash twenty-one, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Big Sioux Community Water System in Trenton Township. Is there a motion to approve?
You skipped item E.
Did I skip E? Okay. I'll go back to E then. An action to approve agreement number twenty-twenty, State, I thought I did that one. Uh, State of South Dakota Department of Health Division of Family and Community Health Subrecipient Agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're gonna go back to our nine o'clock public hearing on a resolution for a budget supplement. It's an action to approve resolution number twenty dash one-eight, a supplemental budget resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would, like, make a comment on the supplemental budget? Any comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any other comments from the commission? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's not nine oh five yet. Do you want to move on, or do you want to move? Everybody, it sounds like they're ready to do nine oh five anyway.
I think we wait until nine oh five in case there's other public that may want to come. I don't know that there will be.
Oh, they may call in, I suppose, also. We have that option.
We should wait.
All right, so we are now on to item F, right?
Yep.
Action to approve agreement number twenty-twenty-one, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Big Sioux Community Water System in Trenton Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments?
Just some repair work.
Any other comments? Call the roll. Or this one is a vice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item G is an action to approve agreement number twenty dash twenty-two, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Interstate Telecommunications Co-op ITC in Richland and Lake Hendricks Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments on this one?
Uh, they're installing new fiber optic cable on several of the roads up in the northeast portion of the county.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item M is, there's an action to declare a two-thousand Sterling truck as surplus to be sold. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Report?
I was gonna talk with the commission about that. I, I think we'd be better off, in my past experience, I know we've had some fairly good success selling these on the online auction, but, uh, I'm gonna try to get some of our equipment that we're gonna be surplusing here down to, like, say, Weeman's or, or these farm-type auctions. I think our equipment's more apt to be sold at a better price for the county, uh, down at one of them at a live auction. So, I, I guess that was my plan for some of my surplus items.
This particular one too, or is this going on the, this one here would go to Weeman Auction?
Yeah.
Or one of those auctions?
Or one of the auction places that regularly hold a fall auction.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Any increased cost to us?
No, and, and the, and the nice part about this is it's an absolute auction. I mean, we take it down there, we, even if it doesn't sell, say, we don't get any bids, they'll, they'll consign it, and then, you know, we'd eventually get our money.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, your mayor.
Just to comment on that, we have a lot of time between now and a fall auction, and when we sell online, I don't believe we're paying any type of commission. Is that right? Whereas with a, a unit that will have hopefully some of its worth, we could try to sell it online, get what we want for it, and avoid paying advertising and commission fees, and if we don't sell it, then put it on the auction in the fall.
I'm fine with that, too. Sounds good.
So the, the direction at this point is to sell it online? Jenna, you have any comments on that?
No comments.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to see, uh, I'm sure Wyman's is an online auction also.
Yeah.
Um, and if Wyman's is, um, holding in a surplus sale that we have equipment on, make sure that the taxpayers in Brookings County are fully aware of when it'll be on Weeman's site.
They still, they still have to follow the advertising laws. We'd have, they'd have to advertise in the Brookings County papers also.
Wyman would have to advertise our equipment in Brookings County.
In, in the legal papers, yeah.
Okay. That's, that's my only concern, is to make, make fully aware that the taxpayers in Brookings County have an opportunity to.
Right, right. But they, they legally are supposed to advertise in the, in those type of papers for any of the counties that they would sell for.
Have we done any large equipment like this on our online auction? Have we had any large trucks or equipment?
We've surplus motor graders and stuff on, like, Purple Wave, I believe, or, uh, right.
Were we satisfied with the auction prices that we got when we did our own, as a rule?
I, I don't recall any of that. I guess maybe that was before my time.
As far as, like, the prices go on those larger equipment, I, 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 I do work with the department heads to see what they want to get out of it and what their lowest bid would be, 'cause they know better than I what those, what they go for in value. Um, so, you know, it doesn't matter, you know? I, I try to, try to work with them to see what they would like to get out of it. What's their lowest bid? What, what would they like to see? And that's usually the bottom line, and then when we, if we can get over that, then it's a bonus.
'Cause we have had items that didn't bring the minimum, and then you have a chance to lower the minimum on the website.
Correct. Yep. Once the, once the sale ends, then you can go and change the price. You can lower it. But once it's open, you can't, you can't change anything about that auction item unless it's a description. But as far as changing that, the, the bid price, you can't, you can't lower it until it's over. And we too, we, um, for the surplus sale, we have to do the same advertising in the, in the newspapers and all of the four legal newspapers, so.
Jenna, are we paying anything in the way of a fee on the online sale?
We do not.
And I, the average, I don't know what Wyman's charging, but the average, I think, on those personal property sales is about eight percent. And when we look at some of these big ticket items, that's a lot.
I think, does the buyer end up absorbing that percent?
They do the, for the, for the public, the surplus public auction that the county uses, the buyer absorbs a ten percent on top of what they're gonna be paying. They have to buy, they have to pay like a ten percent premium. So the county, you know, it doesn't cost the county anything to, to utilize their website. They, they have the staff to do everything, pretty much. But it's up to you guys.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I, I mean, I like Leanne's, you know, idea of trying to do the public auction first, if we can get it, what we're looking for, establish a price. If we don't get it, then maybe look for, uh, a live auction or something in the, um, in the fall, but I don't know if that's.
I think that's the direction we're, we're looking at, yeah. Try the.
Did, Brian, I mean, you, I don't know if the city, if they have equipment that they put on at a certain time, but, uh, if Brian has numerous items, you know, you could go to.
Yeah, the, I mean, the county does do a, 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 a big lot type of auction, but we try to just do that one time a year, um, unless we have these big items, the vehicles that the sheriff's office will bring over, you know, you guys. I mean, we, I try to get them in the newspapers immediately so that we can get it going and you can get your money, you know, out of it, so, but we can work together on that.
Sounds good.
All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We're gonna go back to our nine oh five. Now we're a little late. Public hearing on an application for a liquor license made by SVK Properties. This is an action to approve a retail on-sale liquor license application for them. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. This time I'll open the public hearing. For any comments from any, any one that would like to address it, please come up. Todd, uh, state your name and make your comments.
I guess, my name's Todd Lawson. I'm just here to answer any questions if there is any. I don't really have anything to say.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make any comments on the public hearing? Any comments? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and allow comments or questions from the commissioners. Any questions from the commissioners?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pierce?
As related to, um, the camp that'll be getting the license, is there going to be any difference in how that's operated? Is that going to be open for public, or what's your intention?
It'll mostly, like, family reunions, weddings, class reunion, stuff like that.
So you anticipate some regular retail, I don't know that retail's the right word, but some regular service hours where the public will be coming in, like in a regular bar, for example?
Yeah, we'll have some regular hours, but they'll be somewhat limited.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, I think it's important to point out that we grant the license that allows that to be open, regular bar hours if you wanted to.
Yeah, we wouldn't be open.
I mean, not your choice, but it would allow it, the license would. Any other questions or comments? None?
The only thing I would say is, uh, you know, we have checks regularly in the county for underage and that kind of stuff, and just, uh, one of the things that we have maybe a little bit different than the city is that if there is, um, a violation, that you will have to come back and, and have another public meeting for that license. Otherwise, you follow the rules and don't serve to underage, you're, you're good to go, so. We don't, we don't plan to do that. I understand. I understand there's no plan for that or anything like that, but just, uh, we've kind of gotten a little, little bit tighter on our college, uh, our policy for, uh, getting, if, if something happens like that, incident, so sometimes employees, uh, will rogue on you sometimes and that kind of stuff, so it's important to just make sure we're following those rules of, uh, serving to underage. I was just going through the safe at the Wild Hare yesterday and, uh, found a bag completely full, a huge money bag full of fake IDs that we've confiscated from people trying to, I mean, we do our best.
Yeah. No, I understand.
Any other questions or comments? Now we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck. Nine-ten is an action to approve the closure of a portion of Sixth Avenue for the Brookings Farmers Market. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Would you like to make some comments?
Um, no, I'm just here today. I know that is a very uncertain time, but we are working very hard to have a safety mitigation plan in place to keep the community safe as well as our vendors, but it is an important market for local farmers, local food producers, as well as entrepreneurs and the community that we serve, so.
Now, I'm gonna just ask a question. Took last night would obviously concern your market.
Yes.
What is your plan, or how do, how, how do you want to interact with that?
So, I have been in communication with the city government. They deem us an essential business, very similar to Hy-Vee and Walmart. We are simply an outdoor marketplace. We will not be doing any social gathering promotion. We won't be doing any big special events. Activities, they'll, there will be still the same fun atmosphere. You'll, you'll see the farmers that you enjoy, uh, supporting, but we definitely won't have things that promote people gathering together in large groups, so, um, yeah. I'm paying close attention to the city, um, ordinances, but right now, I don't believe it affects our market, um, at the moment, so.
Okay. I just noticed that in some of the requirements, they're talking about fifty percent of capacity. Well, we don't have a capacity out there.
Yeah.
They're talking, you know, six feet or ten feet apart.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, booths could be separated. I mean, can you get a, ten feet apart?
Yes. So I forwarded on, um, what our mitigation plan is. Our booths will be twelve feet, uh, apart, on one side of the street to leave a larger aisle for customers to walk past each other, for lines to form without, um, but, without, like, being too close together. Um, we are going to be marking the, the ground for six feet for lines, um, behind the vendors. The vendors are being asked to wear masks, um, the, sorry, there's like a lot of stuff that we're doing, but the vendors are asked to wear masks. They have their own hand washing stations. The market itself will have three hand washing stations available, uh, for customers to use. We will not have, um, public bathrooms available because we normally ask the Arts Council if we can use their bathrooms and the Brookings Public Library, and those will be closed, but I believe that that will just promote people to limit their time at the market instead of spending three hours every, every Saturday morning. Maybe people will just, we're asking people to do twenty to thirty minutes or less and asking people only one member of the household to please attend the market. We're, we're asking a lot of customers, but we have customer guidelines that we're going to post, um, in the market space. I've shared them on Facebook. Uh, we will have volunteers kind of helping customers navigate the new market structure as well as making sure that customers and vendors are being safe and things are clean, so we will be sanitizing things very frequently. Normally at the market, we have tables in the middle, uh, to promote social gathering, so we're getting rid of the tables. Um, we will not have any food at the market that people can eat at the market. Everything, if a vendor wants to come with, let's say, there's a, there's a, there's a vendor, brogeable, she makes, um, meals, uh, we're asking her to just make them to go and to not provide any silverware for people to actually eat them at the market.
Okay. I'm gonna make an assumption that if the city removes, still have a plan to, to, to adopt.
Yeah.
Proper ordinance or proper procedures for the public.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I am in.
It's common sense.
Yeah, so I've paid attention to South Dakota Department of Agriculture, the South Dakota Department of Health, and SDSU Extension to see what their guidelines are for farmers markets in South Dakota. Currently, there are none, uh, so I'm just paying attention to Nebraska, Minnesota, even places like California because their, their farmer's market season is so far ahead of ours that they already have a lot of these mitigations in place. Although they are a little bit more different because they have a larger population, um, I'm still trying to pay attention to national standards to make sure that we're in line and, and safe, just like everyone else.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Uh, Louis, have you, have you noticed any, any efforts by other organizations to minimize cash handling practices? And is that something that we're encouraging our vendors to implement?
Yes, so I, the farmer's market will have an, we have our normal information booth, and we actually do have a credit card. I'll be basically an ATM. So if people want to pay for, I don't know how to, sorry, um, go to a vendor and they'll say, I would like to buy carrots, $3. Okay, I'll mark it down. I'll go to the market booth and I'll let the manager know that some, a customer, this is their, their tally from each booth. $3 at this booth, $4 at this booth, and then at the market, they'll swipe their card, pay for all of it, and I will write a check to the vendor, or I will send it digitally, or I will find a way. Um, a lot of vendors are, are feeling comfortable with cash handling. Um, we're paying attention to how other markets are using cash. A lot of people are quarantining their cash. So their, their cash that they use at the market is only for the market. They leave it in a plastic bag for the entire week. Um, and the virus, there is different research out there. Some say that the virus only lasts 24 hours on paper. Uh, some research says five days, some research says three days, so it's all over. But our market is once a week, so if vendors feel comfortable quarantining their cash and only using that cash at the market, then they do feel comfortable, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Ms. Pierce, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, one thing I'd, I'd like to thank you. It seems like you've done your homework and you've really worked hard to make this a safe market for the public to come to without having any of us tell you what you have to do. Uh, it seems that you've actually gone above and beyond some of the requirements of the city. But at the same time, you did it on your own, and I appreciate that, and I think the public does too. They'll choose whether they want to come to the market and you'll choose whether you have vendors there to, to, to supply that demand. So I appreciate that work. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Flip three pages ahead, we'll get here. We have all the way down to the end of our general business, itemized, a discussion of possible action on reopening county facilities to the public. Is there a motion to approve it's possible action?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments are, as it's related right now, we were closed until, I believe tomorrow. Until tomorrow, I had conversations with the city on, because we have a joint facility here, on what would work and who would be prepared and how we could logically open the, the building to the public again. Uh, recognize that the building is open for primary voting and city voting down in the west end of the lobby with some curtains and things. Those will stay up no matter what until we get through the primary and the general election for the city school board on the 23rd of June. Prior to that, a discussion was had that possibly the middle of May seemed to be where a lot of communities are going with some of those restrictions. Uh, that would leave us with May 18th as a possible opening date if we chose to do so. Uh, we would certainly like to have that coordination with the city. That conversation has been had, but I don't think they've taken any action at this point. So either we can make an action today to, to move to the 18th. It's an opening date for offices, giving us time for all our offices to prepare for that eventuality. Uh, we have some protective things in place. We had a staff meeting and I'll let Stacy come out and report on the staff meeting with the department heads on how we would, we would do that and what it would look like.
We met with department heads last week and discussed what that would look like. I think each individual department is coming up with an internal policy, but we have put some measures in place already, including some plexiglass shields in front of some of the offices. If you go around some of the departments, you'll see those in place now. You know, a policy for, for my department, for instance, looks a little bit different than what a policy for Vicki's office looks like. We do, um, we've purchased some stickers to put on the floor that we can place six feet apart so people know where they can stand safely. Those already have, uh, they arrived yesterday, so we'll be putting those in place. Just extra hand sanitizing and extra cleaning of the, of the counters and the spaces that the public will touch more often will be implemented as well. So I think at the department head meeting, I got, you know, I think everyone was comfortable. Once those, those mitigations were in place to, to move forward with opening the facility back up. So, um, I believe on the city side, I don't believe it takes city council action to open this building. I think the city manager can just make that, make that decision on what that date is. You know, I think, I think overall, I'd have to maybe reach out to any of the department heads again, but I think we're getting really close to being ready to, to, to open the doors again and allow people in the back end of the building.
I know that Vicki has mentioned that her staff, the extra work that they go through. They've been busier than they were when the doors were open and allowing the public to come in. So I, I think they're somewhat anxious to get back to, to the new normal, as we'll call it. It's not going to be normal. It's the new normal. By distancing people, you've got a doorway and four different workstations in there, the customer service counters, I guess we could call them. So it'd be no more than four people in there at a time. Uh, people would have to stand outside or outside the, the building. So I think we, that's our largest traffic area is that correct? I would guess. Any comments, Vicki, on finance?
No, I think that we've got it all kind of figured out. We have to have an internal policy yet that we are working on, but don't have it finalized yet. But yeah, we are ready to open whenever you guys tell us we can.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Pierce.
I'm throwing it out. I'm not making a motion, but would, would it be appropriate for us to, um, take action that said we will reopen on May 18th, subject to the city agreeing to that date? I, I don't know that we want to reopen our half of the building when, when they don't. Um, or, or the motion could be or such date as the, as later date as the city determines. We need, we need some heads up for our employees to know that they got to come back to work so that they can make arrangements for, you know, their kids or whatever, right? So I'd like us to have a date that we're looking at and then, um, give you and Stacy some flexibility in working that out with the city. What do you think?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. We, we do need to give some time to prepare. I know most departments have been looking towards this and preparing for it and that kind of thing. But, um, I think you're right. You need to give the employees some time to make arrangements because, uh, you know, without school and, and some daycare's shutting down, some daycare's only going half days. It's still going to have some hurdles to get over with our employees on when to come in and how they're going to handle childcare. And I think that's something that maybe is getting overlooked a little bit when everybody going back to work, uh, you know, because there is no gap there, you know, is that kind of stuff. Boys and girls clubs not there, so what do we do for childcare? So it's, it's going to be some, you know, for the employees, it's going to be a, something to work out and that kind of thing. So I think we need to be flexible if we can as a department head. Uh, if there's some employees that they just don't have childcare for half a day or something like that, that we're going to have to work with them, uh, in that, in that case, so.
And we do, um, I think the, the discussion was at the department head meeting to continue to allow for some of that flexibility. But keep in mind, there's also the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that is still in place. So people can use that leave that includes a portion of that. I won't get into the weeds too much with it, but it does include the ability for people to stay home to care for school-aged children that are not in school right now. And I think even moving forward beyond that, that, um, our department heads are going to be more than willing to work with staff to accommodate that because it is just a different situation that we're in right now, so.
I would assume that we have some staff that are working from home. We don't have a lot. Do we have some that are working from home?
Yes, we do have staff that are working from home.
Yeah, and.
And I think.
And some of that may continue.
And I, I believe some of that will continue, um, based on, um, the, just the ability to come in if they do need to stay home with kids, but then also subject to making sure that the offices are, are staffed too. So I think each individual department head will work through that, and it may look a little bit different from department to department, but I think we can handle that at the department level rather than making a policy here that everybody has to come back to work. So I think it can be handled.
I don't think that's the policy we're looking at. No, I, I think it's basically getting the doors open for the public that could come in and do the things that, that they have to do here or can do here better. And Dan, I don't know if you had any comments about State's Attorney's Office as far as opening?
No, I would just echo Stacy's comments.
Bev, do you have anything on, on your side of the stuff? You have, like I said, you've made arrangements with this, or are you going to change those? Are you going to continue to kind of go as is?
Come on up to the mic, Bev, please. Thank you.
One, one of my employees is taking that, um, what did you, family, whatever. Um, and she's doing that just one day a week. She has school-aged two, two young children. And, um, the other days, uh, her, her parents and her husband's parents have been take, taking care of them now. She's running into that her mother is going to be having surgery. And, um, so she's, may need a little bit of extra time on that. Um, what I'm running into now is my other employee is having surgery tomorrow and will be out until mid-June. So, um, while the building is closed, I will be manning the office on Thursdays by myself and get as much done as I possibly can. And we will just take it as it comes after the building is open and, and see how I, how we can manage it.
And that's not to say out of, um, just to clarify, that's not to say that having one-time-a-day appointments with folks from title companies can't still be how we function. I mean, I think there's some, there's some advantages to continuing to minimize excess traffic. And so that might be a good policy to, to hold on to long-term.
That's, that's a good idea. It seems to be working really well for them. Um, you know, they spend more time in their allotted time, you know? Instead of coming back and forth and back and forth, I, I think they, they do stay and get everything done that they possibly can. And then they just hold what comes up till the next day. So that's a, a good suggestion. And I think that all of the attorneys and the funeral homes and that, they're very good to work with. So, um, that's things I will continue to do, um, like having the funeral homes call in and we get that done, but they aren't standing waiting or anything, which we had practiced that prior to, to the COVID-19. So, um, I'll write that down in the policy and, um, I think it'll, it'll work out.
Other questions or comments?
I don't know if Larry and Ryan want to address, um,
Yep.
the BCOAC, the advisory board met last Monday and gave a recommendation to open. They feel comfortable to allow that to open based, you know, I think based on, you know, kind of what Dustin had said earlier about some mitigation practices in place there as well.
Well, I think what, and Dustin, you can head onto this too if you want to come up. Uh, one of the things we thought we could do, um, was similar to maybe a soft opening type of thing. We have members and we have memberships that have access to the building. Right now, we're not open to anybody, public or members. Um, what our thought was that we could open up tomorrow, May 6th, which was our original date, to members only. Um, whoever has a membership, starting there. Uh, we've talked about reimbursing the, the members two months for being closed. We closed March 18th from members, and so it's a little less than two months, but we could add two months onto their membership, um, and then they could start coming May 6th if they would like to with obviously standards in place of social distancing and max capacities, like the lanes, shooting every other lane, max of six people on the shooting lane, um, limiting the number of RSOs that are there, um, and employees and, and also limiting groups. For example, in the classrooms, making sure that there's separation between a classroom and stuff like that. And Dustin's been working with that and his employees on trying to those to handle that. And then maybe on the 18th, when, if this building opens up on the 18th, that's maybe when the BCOAC would open up. And that would give them, you know, a couple of weeks here to test the, test how things are going and how it's working. And then continue that through the 18th, not just open it up public and it's all those, all those parameters are, are gone. We're going to keep that going on for the safety of, of employees and, and our, our clients, so. Dustin, you got comments on that?
That was, yeah, that was our plan, so, and I've been trying to inform the RSOs and the part-time staff. I actually texted the part-time staff before I came here. We're going to have a meeting tonight, um, after we decide when we can actually open. But yeah, so May 6th, open up to members only, um, give them two months, um, add it onto their memberships. Um, but we were going to limit the archery side. Um, nothing's set in stone yet, but we want to be there. So when they come in, we're going to wipe down everything, and then when they leave, we're going to wipe down the doors and stuff when they exit. Uh, we were going to put the bows behind the front desk, so if they want a bow, we can give them the bow. When they bring it back, we wipe it down. Um, if they want some arrows, here's five arrows. Um, I haven't been there when the place is open, but, um, all the part-time staff is telling me most of the members bring in their guns or their arrows. So hopefully that won't be a problem for two weeks, um, until we open up to the public on May 18th. Um, right now in the archery range, we have a six-foot table, so they can go in and there's a slot, stay six feet apart. Um, in the gun range, we have closed down every other range, so, and we left the ADA lane open, so there's, they can shoot up, six people can shoot in there with the RSO. Uh, from what I've been told, most of the people that come in and they're members for the gun range are familiar with shooting a gun. So yeah, hopefully we can only staff one RSO, but I'd like to talk with the RSOs. They know the best. Um, way to approach that. And then, I mean, there's enough rooms in that place to where we can have eight to 10 people. Is in the archery range, uh, six people can go in the gun range, um, and still stay at that 50% occupancy. Um, there has been a couple people reach out to me about the, uh, classroom. Um, and I was going to let them know after this meeting. Um, but I think we can still open up the classroom depending on how our set is to have six feet apart. Um, and I don't think the meetings that have contacted me are over 12 people anyways. But, uh, so is that something that we were going to decide today? Um, because I'm, I'm going to have to get ahold of the RSOs for, if we're going to open tomorrow, let them know what's going on. And then tonight I'd like to inform the part-time staff as well.
Are you okay with opening tomorrow?
I think we are, and from what I've been, and another, so administrative hours, and then we were, our plan was to keep like, um, so when you're a gun range member, the five to nine, there has to be an RSO. So I was thinking 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, um, open for like the archery range, so they could come in. I know they can normally come in 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM at night. Um, that would limit some of the hours, but we're still trying to work with everybody, um, just to be safe. And with the current situation, I would think everybody would kind of recognize that and.
No, I think that's a, that's a really good idea to make sure that we can wipe down the arrows and they're bringing stuff in and they're not, if they're walking in coughing and sneezing saying, no, even though you're a member, you're, you're, you got the signs, we're not going to let you in here and stuff. And so I think that's a really good idea because we don't, we want to make sure you have control of members that are coming through. And, you know, on that archery range, really don't from 5:00 in the morning till 8:00.
Yeah.
And from 9:00 till 11:00, anybody could come in that's a member to shoot range there. And so I think that's a good idea and they, and they should be open to that, I would guess.
Yeah, and we, uh, Bob also brought us some sanitizers, so we got little bottles and we're going to put them kind of where they walk in and exit. Um, and then I was going to police, we got 20 people show up to shoot. Um, we're going to make some signs that say, um, use your time wisely. Uh, don't, I mean, don't spend five hours in here if there's, I mean, spend five hours if there's nobody else waiting, but please wait in your car. Here's my phone number. If you want to go home, I can text you, that kind of thing, just to try to be as reasonable and accommodating as possible. Um, but yeah, I think we could, we can keep control and do that, I think.
Okay, you be okay with that?
Yeah.
Plan in place and I'll start calling people and emailing people tonight and soft open tomorrow, and then we'll look at it for the 18th for public.
I think you'll want to go out and make some sort of, at least to the radio stations and the newspaper, let them know so that your members know.
Yep, and then, uh, we'll try to, I think Facebook's what everybody's been looking at, and they have a Zoho to where we can email all the members.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I'll, we'll get on that, um, and then put it on Facebook saying members only. Um, if you purchase a membership, there we go, you can come in. Uh, maybe that's a good way to sell some memberships. Um, but yeah, and then maybe I can reach out to some of the radio stations that we already used and maybe do something on there just to get the word out a little bit more.
Any other questions on the BCOAC opening? I know we don't have a determined date at 18th. That's sort of what we're floating at this point. Basically depends on.
Everything else.
What happens with, with the city and what happens with the, the COVID-19 response, I guess. Any other questions on BCOAC for Justin? I think you got your marching orders at this point anyway, that I think tomorrow is fine. Uh, just good luck.
All right, thank you.
You're, you're venturing in an area none of us have been in before, so it's, uh, great to have you onboard. Uh, so let's get back to the discussion on whether it's the 18th or not. Is everybody comfortable with that? And I think the department heads are as far as there's time to, to mitigate that and work it out with staff and determine how they're going to, they're going to handle it. I think, like, we're pretty well-prepared. It just gives us a little extra time. And it gives the city time to catch up with what they need to do to open. All right, so the motion wasn't really specific, but the motion, uh, I'll just restate the motion was basically to allow the. was basically to allow the BCOAC to open on May 6th with membership only. Tentatively May 18th for opening of the city offices, or excuse me, county offices, including the BCOAC to the public. Does that sound right?
That would be the amendment to the motion.
That'd be an amendment to the motion. I can make an amendment, so I did. Is there a sec?
I can second the amendment.
Any comments on the amendment to the motion to open on those dates and times? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Thank you. It passes. And I, and again, you know, we're going to use common sense. We're all adults here. We'll use common sense as we walk, work through this process. If this information becomes available, makes us want to change our mind, we have another meeting before the 18th, so.
I'd also like to add, uh, I'd like to thank Commissioner Bartley for obtaining and, and installing the petitions in the offices.
We are ready. We have, we have polycarbonate bullet resistant sneeze shields, I guess you want to call them. I don't know what else you'd call them, installed. So we're, we're ready in that department. Just all the other personnel things, we have to make sure we've got in place and all the staff is informed exactly how we're going to do it and handle it. So that should give us time to do it.
We still need to vote on the main motion.
As amended, so let's, the main motion as amended, all those in favor. Any other comments, first of all? Since we already made some, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Motion carries. All right. States, or as Commission Department Directors report.
Budget hearings, despite everything, it continues to move forward and is upon. Budgets are due to Vicki in a couple of weeks, end of week and a half. So budget hearings, we usually do that in the middle of June. We do have meetings. I'd like to get that, uh, calendar, that date on everyone's calendar right now. What we've been able to do recently was kind of start in the morning and kind of get it knocked out in, in one day. I'd have to go back, I think, can't remember if we started eight or 8:30. I can't remember offhand, but planned, I can, I can let everyone know that here. But if we can get a date, middle of June. So we meet, our June meetings, we actually meet on Thursday, June 4th. That's a regular commission date and it's a Thursday because of the primary election on the second and we canvass votes on the 4th. And then the next meeting is the 16th. So, um, and it doesn't work to meet half a day unless you want to meet another half a day somewhere. Unless that works, we can make that work too. But so I'm, I'm kind of thinking, um, maybe that week of the, the 15th, that Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, that week. Even the week of the 22nd, I don't know. Let me know. What do you guys think? Got any dates that don't work?
Preferably not Monday.
Okay. I agree.
How about the 18th? That's a Thursday.
That works for me. June 18th, yes.
Brian?
When do we start?
Start in more, it's going to be all day. Not 7:00 AM, no. It'll be eight or 8:30. I'll get that out to you.
Eight?
I don't know. I'll, I'll look at the schedule from, from last year. I think it was, we met a little bit ahead of time and then the first meeting started at maybe 8:30 or something. So if I remember right, the first appointment with the first department was at 8:30, so. All right, June, Thursday, June 18th. I'll get that, um, sent out to everybody. Couple of things have come up since I published my report last week. The Chamber is doing a virtual post legislative luncheon. It's going to feature, uh, South Dakota Chamber of Commerce President Dave Owen, but as, as well as District Legis, District 7 legislators, Tim Reed and VJ Smith. That's going to be, um, it's going to be a Zoom webinar on May 12th. So that is next Tuesday, a week from today. And it's over the, the lunch hour from noon to 1:00. I think we had, we, we did not previously have reservations for the luncheon. I think it kind of got scheduled and then was canceled right away due to, due to the pandemic. So I'm just gauging interest in, in that. If anyone wants to attend, I can get you signed up. And then as it, I'm guessing once we register, they'll send the credentials to get on the Zoom meeting. So Angie wants to attend?
Would you register me, Stacy?
Yep.
It's 12 to 1:30 or something like that?
It's, it says noon to 1:00.
Okay, I couldn't do that.
Larry, do you want to do it? Are you available that day? Okay. All right, we'll get, um, if you are, let me know. I need to probably get registered here before the end of the week, so. Then I have, um, Daniel Scholl is the Vice President for Research and Economic Development at SDSU. And he is putting together a, um, on kind of on behalf of SDSU's Senior Leadership Team, a community leadership group. The purpose is to have kind of a single point of contact between SDSU, the senior leadership at SDSU and leaders of various segments of the community. So that as the SDSU plans for the JAX to return, all of the students coming back here in just a few short months, that we are communicating back and forth on what that might look like, that that communication gets out to all of us as well. I have been in contact with him and have said that, you know, at least tentatively, that I would be his point of contact. And they have a couple of Zoom meetings set up for later this week, actually to start those. If that, if you're comfortable with me being that point of contact, I will attend whatever meetings he sets up. He's actually on the Communities of Excellence Group, so I have gotten to know him over the past several months. So if you're comfortable with that, otherwise if there is someone else that wants to be that point of contact or an additional point of contact, I don't know how many, you know, if we need to from the county or not. But any thoughts? I have it on my agenda to attend and then I will be sharing what information I get with you. If you are comfortable with that, I'll just continue to do that. Lastly, um, on my report, I have, um, trying to schedule and it's kind of been pushed out a couple of different times, the, um, the jail page flip meeting. They want to set that up as just sort of a small committee because it is, it's an all-day, nine to five meeting where you go through the final construction drawings of the, the jail project page by, literally page by, page by page. What they're looking at right now is next, uh, Tuesday, May 12th, with a break over the lunch, which is the same time as the chamber's meeting now. But I know that, I believe Commissioner Bartley and I have been kind of a part of those conversations as well as the Sheriff's Department staff, BKV, our architects, and then Henry Carlson, representatives from Henry, Henry Carlson as well. If that works, um, I think they also want to review DEC/SEC selection as well that day.
And that's the security firm that would take care of everything with the jail as far as from jail cells to operational and the control center to all the security measures. We need to make a decision on which company. I think there were two RFPs for that that we need to look at.
Yep. I believe, yeah, we received two, two back.
So that would be that same day. I have asked Commissioner Boersma if she has time available that day to attend.
I've marked my whole, my whole day for it.
You have, on May 12th. Perfect.
June 12th, or no, no, May 12th, excuse me.
May 12th. Not June, next week.
Got it. Next week. Got it. May 12th. So we'll, we'll attend that and report back to everybody on the page flip. Any other questions on that?
Will that be held here?
I need to see if the community room, I hope the community room is available. Otherwise I'll be needing to find a space for that. I'll, I'll figure that out, but, um, I'll get that information out to people. Thank you. Nine o'clock, it's all day. But if you plan to attend, Larry, then I need to notice it as a public meeting because I believe Commissioners Bartley and Boersma are going to go.
At which we can do if you want to attend.
Yeah. Let me know.
We can notice it. If, if other Commissioners want to attend, fine, we can notice it.
Should we notice it anyway, just as a, if schedules allow? We can.
Okay, we can notice it.
Stacy, your comments made me think of something that I had forgotten to bring up earlier. We had a county bar meeting on Friday, Zoom, but there were questions about how the, um, security is going to be working at the courthouse with the metal detectors and the cards and, um, how out-of-town attorneys and in-town attorneys, are they going to be different, handled differently and all that? Is it possible for somebody to reach out to the county bar and, and give the information so that gets disseminated? I would have asked Marty that.
The information, what, what information are you speaking of that gets?
Okay, so for example, some attorneys were given cards a week ago. And they're not cards that you use in a door, but they're just ID cards. All right? And so I'm not quite sure how that all works. What's going to be going on with those cards? Who else getting them? How are out-of-town attorneys going to be handled differently from in-town attorneys? All of that needs to, whatever the policy is for people, particularly attorneys getting in and out of the courthouse as we set up our new security system over there with the metal detector. There were a lot of questions. I didn't know any answers.
My understanding, Leanne, is that nothing will change with that. For, at least for the time being. The security system is in place and everyone coming and going when, when the building is open, everyone coming and going through that has to come in through the single point entrance and go through the metal detector and through the security checkpoint at the courthouse.
I don't think that's what the procedure is. And that's what we need to get tacked down and advise the bar.
Everyone's been going through the south door. And for whatever reason, I haven't been privy to the security conversations as it relates to the courthouse. So I can't really answer those questions, but I can talk to Marty about it.
That'd be great. And then just somebody tell the bar so everybody knows what's going on.
I, I, if, those security measures were not in, put into place due to pandemic, those were security measures put in place? Okay, so those, as far as I know, nothing's going to change. If, if the building is open, everyone will have to still go through that security.
No, I don't think they're having attorneys go through it. But I don't know which ones do and which ones don't. That's the question.
Right. So we walk through the security, but it's not like we're getting patted down or checked or anything like that. I mean, they recognize who the attorneys are, so we just walk through on our way up to the courtroom. And that's been the process.
But maybe Dan, you'd be willing to share that with the bar, that information, whatever it's going to be, after you talk to Marty.
Yeah, I just know that that's, that's what's happening already and that's what's been happening the last month. Is that the two individuals that have been running that security in the courthouse, they know the attorneys and so they just allow them to walk through. So, but yeah, if there's any changes, I can, I can let you know. Yep.
Any other?
That's all I had unless you have any additional questions for me.
Okay. As to your question with the SDSU, uh, I have no objection to. Reporting to us. So there's your marching orders on that one. State's attorneys in Florida.
Things are going well. Nothing new to report.
That's a short report. Commissioner reports. With Commissioner Jensen.
Mr. Chair, before we do that.
Yes.
Could, could Dan report on the JDAI meeting? He's got better background than I do on that.
Yeah, there hasn't been much movement, other. Get their application next week. And if you could draft a letter for the county requesting the funding, so the grant person, or the person receiving the grant application can just review, the county's input on that. We're currently putting together other request letters, uh, this week to get them over to the club so they can submit the application.
Anything else?
There will be, uh, action item. Next meeting, is that right, Dan?
Yeah, once we.
Grant application.
Right. Once I get confirmation from the club that the application's been submitted, I'll let Stacy know.
Okay. Commissioner Pierce, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Jensen's report.
On the 25th, Sonya gave me an update here on what's going on. I just lost it. But, uh, all 4H activities were suspended till May 31st, I believe. They do have a deadline, uh, June 1st for registering animals for the state fair. Hoping that by then, uh, that everything be back to normal, that they'd be able to hold the state fair. Also the achievement days, um, they are continuing with virtual activities as much as they can. And, uh, just hoping it clears up in the future here. On the 27th, had a BCOAC meeting with Dustin Director and it went very well. Seems like he's getting a good grasp on everything. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Krogman.
On our BCOAC meeting and Dustin, one thing we want to remind. We're doing 4H and the members, the public are only to use the north door. 4H, we've kind of resigned that to the 4H door. They have a restroom there. They have access to that. They can get into their office space without having to go through the main part of the building. So we think we've got a good setup there for.
Speaking, keep, yeah, 4H offices can remain locked. And then they'll use that south entrance. And then the GF and P offices, um, they're not there either right now. If they do come into the office, they'll just keep the doors locked as well until they've, until the state officially opens them and they're back to business as normal too, so.
We just got to remind, when we repost this, that public needs to only use that north, north. Just a reminder of that. So anyway, um, I'll get to my stuff. We had a beta meeting, Zoom meeting on the 22nd. Obviously times are very difficult for them and transportation and, uh, and serving their customers. And they are working really, really hard to make sure everybody stays safe, their employees and the people they're still working with. And ridership obviously is way down and stuff like that. But, uh, just gave us updates of all the things that they're doing to try to keep everybody safe. So we appreciate their hard work out there. Uh, on the 27th, again, had the BCOAC meeting with our advisory board. Also went to our, didn't go to, had a Zoom meeting with the Brookings Health Board. And again, preparing as much as they can for everything and, and their staff and our health system is doing a wonderful job. And, and they're prepared, it sounds like. And, uh, and so that's a good thing. We got that updated and got updates from them. And, um, so there, uh, you know, we talk about financially, how tough it is on, on everything. And the hospital is, is no different. Fortunately, uh, they have cash on hand that allows them to get through this time. They've been fiscally conservative. They've kept quite a bit of cash on hand, which is to their points because there's nationwide hospitals that are going out of business now because there's nobody going to the hospital and, uh, and they're kind of bankruptcy. And, and so testament to our Brookings Health that through this time, I mean, there are millions of dollars under budget right now of, of income, of revenue. So, uh, but they do have cash on hand, which is again testament to them and their planning and their strategies and their, you know, their, um, their ability to have, have cash on hand too. So they gave us that update, which is, which is good and we appreciate that. So, uh, next on, then we had another BCOAC meeting on the 30th. That's where Dustin and. That's where Dustin and Stacy and I met to go over the plan to open up to members, a soft opening, and to have protocols in place and different things like that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Boersma.
On April 23rd, I had a with Rick Nicholson about and they tentatively have us on their schedule for the end of June pending kind of other work and weather. So just so that we're all aware of where that's going, we will likely see a revised bid from them, and we'll do a pre, pre-construction onsite consult with them prior to them beginning work. So at a future meeting, we'll see a revision on that, on that bid prior to them getting started. And then on the 29th of April, we had our ICAP caucus meeting for redefining the districts to maintain that three-part representation. There was, by our district, which is Brookings, Moody, and Lake Counties, the decision was, and this was not a requirement, but our caucus decided that they wanted to maintain the, the three-county representation as well as the three-sector representation. So the public sector individual that's moving forward will be me. I believe Lake County is represented by the nonprofit sector, and then Moody by public sector. And I might have that backwards, but that, that was the intent, to make sure that all three counties are still represented as well as the three sectors. So moving forward, our district will be whittled down to three of us instead of nine of us. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Pierce, your report.
On April 22nd, I attended the BEDC meeting on Zoom. BEDC is, is working on setting up the search process for when Al Hooton retires and currently working on some timelines and deadlines and looking at the job description and trying to figure all of that out. And in the meantime, the organization's actively involved in the tracking of our economic indicators for Brookings with the pandemic going on, and you've probably been seeing all of those emails coming out with additional information on that. On April 23rd, I attended JDAI with Dan. And I also, on a different day, watched the online presentation on the 20th Street interchange. And just want to tell everybody, it had, if you didn't take an opportunity to look at that, it had four sample grant systems, which was really interesting to look at. I did submit the comment that you all approved on behalf of the Brookings County Commission so that that, that got put in. The deadline for doing that was yesterday. So that all got taken care of, and we're online and supporting that project. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. My report, I date sign it actually happened on. The governor's briefings were daily, and on a telephone call, normally at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, and then she's become less and less involved with daily briefings, but that takes some time to attend those briefings. Also, we have a local COVID-19 committee meeting that consists of the city, the county, Mr. Hill, and university, and several of the manufacturers in town, and in addition to that, the Brookings Health System. So those meetings are less and less. At the moment, we've had a couple that we haven't had because we haven't had any new updates on anything other than numbers. So that looks good, but we continue to plan to have those meetings as information becomes available that we need to discuss between those entities. So those are Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Been busy with, with the department head meeting, as Stacy had reported on. I think we've got a really good handle on that. One of the directives, I asked for us to make sure that the policies weren't in conflict with each other between departments, so we've had an issue with that, and I think the policies are, are looking like they're aligned. Obviously, there's some differences in each of the offices, but they're aligned. And I think, in all honesty, I think our staff has been excellent to, to get that ready to open up. I think everybody's anxious to get back to somewhat of the new normal, because we can't get back to normal, but to the new normal, and we'll define that as we move along. So appreciate the council's, all the commissioners' help, as I've reached out to each of you to ask your opinions on some things and got some feedback. So it's, it's good that we operate a little bit differently than, than the county or the city does. So the 18th, as I said, is, is a discussion point. I think we've made the decision to move forward with that, so we'll see how it goes with the city's decision, and we'll follow through on that later. We can make a changer to that as we move along here. So we'll, we'll watch the numbers. I know that the hospital is, elective surgeries are back on schedule, obviously because we've had one department head who's going to have some surgeries that are going to affect their personnel and employees. So we'll have to watch that as we go along, too. As those things start to open up, we're going to have some things that are going to change for us. So I think we're proactive, and I think we're in good shape for that report. Yes, you may.
I guess I got a question. I've been talking to a couple businesses in Brookings County. We, I'm not sure how much we've discussed this. We have a resolution out there of asking, and that's still in effect. We're not repealing that or not doing anything. But I guess my question is, is, I had a question, is how do we move forward? Considering the city doing what they're doing to allowing them, people to have people come into their establishments and take steps? If we have a person, now we have a new liquor license for, you know, business. How, as a commission here, I guess my question is, is are we okay with advising that as long as you take your certain steps? Do we want to give them the 50% rule, occupancy rule, any of that type of stuff with, any of that type of thing with our county employers, places that group? For example, you know, Mr. Ross was talking about family reunions and different stuff like that. I don't want to just open this up to say, yeah, here's 150 people. Now it's, we're open, you know, and the floodgates open up.
I don't know that we can dictate any of that. I mean, we can encourage that, and I think that's what our resolution did. It encouraged people to follow the guidelines that have been established. I don't know. Dan can maybe speak to that if the commission has any type of authority to say, do this, or please do this, or do that. I think the, the resolution really speaks to it, I think, pretty well, that we're continuing to encourage people to follow the guidelines that have been in place. I don't think, we were never in a, in a position where we were telling them that they had to close completely.
And I didn't, I don't expect that either, and that's not where I want to go with it. But now, you know, I, I don't want to turn around and say, yeah, do whatever you want, you know? It's, it's here, we can't enforce you, so just do whatever you want, you know? I, I want to encourage, like, for example, if, you know, we need to send a letter out with the resolution saying, we're still highly encouraging you to follow this resolution as you move forward, you know, hearing other places opening up, you know? If you want to open up, just don't open the floodgates and allow that many people, but just please be smart. And so I don't know if, if, when somebody asks me that, or am I okay to say that, just follow that? Or what's everybody's thoughts, I guess?
Well, I think if you look at that city ordinance or the resolution last night that was talked about with the city council, I would just point you to resolution that we passed back in
Did hand that out this morning.
The 25th of March, 2020. That paragraph to the very last page, subsections A, B, and C. So Ryan, to your point, I mean, I, a lot of what is being, and I don't want to speak for the city here, but talking about 10 or more people within a particular establishment maintaining six feet apart, it's not, it's suspending or modifying those business practices to, to do that. And so if the commission feels that it's appropriate to leave this resolution in place, again, this resolution wasn't mandating anything. It was just encouraging a lot of these businesses that if they desire to open up, that they still maintain some of the encouragements that were in the resolution. So I like the way this resolution is written right now because it still offers flexibility, doesn't mandate. It's still asking to comply with the CDC recommendations of if you are going to open and you're going to have people coming into your business, that you do so in a way that allows, you know, safety to still be at the forefront in terms of spacing and the amount of people within an establishment. So I mean, so if somebody asks you, you can point them to this resolution that went into effect on March 25th, and that the county commission is still asking people to follow, or encourage them to follow this resolution.
And that's, I guess, my thought. I just wanted to maybe reiterate that to our businesses that are operating in the county. It's not a free-for-all yet, you know? We still need to, our resolution is still in place. We're still encouraging you to do that. And I guess that's kind of what I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page then.
Right.
I really just continue to use common sense, and I think it's encouraging that most of the businesses within the county took it upon themselves to do these things, which is what I expected, and it's what happened. And I think they'll continue to do that, and I'm proud of the businesses that, that, that closed or that took the actions necessary to protect us. And I think they'll continue to do that. We certainly hope they will because the public probably won't visit their establishment if they don't. But hopefully, yeah, our, our message is continue to follow the CDC guidelines and, and use common sense.
I mean, just during the summer times out in the county, there'll be opportunity for family reunions and for things like that. And, and as financially people have struggled through this time, those are opportunities. And so there's got to be a, a way between the safety of the people that are coming in and the ability to make money. And so I know that will be a tough call coming down the road for a lot of people this summer. And so, and a lot of it, those things happen out in the county, around lakes, you know, different places and stuff like that. So just to reiterate that, you know, that we're, we want to make sure they're making good, good common sense choices.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So what we could do, you know, to your, is the board will be taking action on those renewals for the liquor license for all those businesses. So I could, you know, once you guys take action on those, and if you do approve those, because those will be coming up here pretty soon, I could just attach the resolution that you guys passed, you know, and just kind of highlight that area, you know, when I send their certificate, that you guys renewed it for another year. I could just include a resolution in there as well.
Yeah, and I think the public is, has used common sense up to this point in personal responsibility, and I encourage them to continue to do that. It's probably going to be another year before we see any new normal established for those establishments. So hopefully, they can stay in business and provide services. But you can't run to the nearest bar when it's open and pack a place. Let's, let's use common sense. Vicki?
I forgot to mention in my report that the voter registration deadline is May 18th. So just give that to the public that
18th.
For the primary election, yes.
So the, go ahead and tell them the registration process at this point, since your office is still closed until the 18th at this point. What's the online mail? What happens?
We do it through the mail and through our Dropbox. They, if they call in, we can send them the registration application, and they can get us back to us through the mail or through the Dropbox.
And the application has to have a photo ID or something copied with it? What is it named? Was it required?
The voter registration list does not require an attached photocopy of your ID. It does require that you list what your number is, your driver's license number, or the last four digits of your social for the registration. And like Vicki said, you know, we can, we can get that application out to them via email. However, our office does have to have the original registration form, so they got to either drop it off or mail it in.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.